Hi, welcome to the session on the impact of COVID-19 on productivity. I'm Tony Venables, Research Director of the Productivity Institute, which is the ASRC's new initiative to address, new research initiative, to address the UK's productivity puzzle. It's headquartered at Manchester, but with a large reach around universities in the country and also into the business community. We've got three speakers in the session this afternoon, all of them from the Productivity Institute. First Bart van Ark, who's Director of the Institute, followed by Diane Coyle, and then by Steve Roper. Usual rules apply, so each speaker has 20 minutes to be followed by 10-minute Q&amp;A. Questions into the Q&amp;A box, please, and I'll field them. I'll arrange them at the end and invite you, invite questioners to speak. With that, let me hand straight over to the first speaker, who is Bart van Ark.
Thanks, Tony. Let me share my screen and get things going here. Just give a shout if you can see it, but otherwise I just kept going. Well, thanks, thanks everyone for joining this session and great to see a couple of new papers and work coming out of the Productivity Institute and an honour to be the first one to present. I thought a good way to start this paper is actually paraphrase Paul Krugman and basically saying the long-run productivity may be almost everything, but in the short run, it may mean almost nothing. And that's really what this paper is about. It's about the short run, because we were interested to actually take a look at what happened in 2020 during COVID. But at the same time, we of course know this was an extraordinary volatile period and the numbers are all over the place. So a lot of people are actually saying, I mean, don't even touch these numbers for 2020 because it's such an extraordinary period. There's no information in it. But yeah, we never believed that there is no information in data. So we thought we would have a go at it and see if you could make something out of this, of the data as they're being published, not just by the Office of National Statistics, but also to provide some comparative perspective with France and the United States, which are the other two countries that I'm not going to talk about extensively today, but will be another part of this paper. So why do we have lots of concerns about quarterly productivity estimates? Because they tend to be noisy and especially noisy during times of crisis. As in 2020, both outputs and inputs have huge fluctuations. And you know, because it's an, you divide outputs for inputs, you just sort of, you know, exacerbate that kind of volatility into the productivity numbers. Also, there's obviously a huge issue around capacity utilization. That's actually an issue at all times. But again, you know, during crises, these capacity utilization numbers adjust very quickly. And the adjustments that you can possibly make for it, we're not making adjustments for it in this paper, but if you would, it actually makes quite a bit of difference what kind of method you use. The data revisions, they always happen, but again, they get enlarged if there are these large fluctuations. So I'm sure that we'll see some revisions coming through over the coming quarters for the 2020 numbers. And then, of course, when you get these shocks, you have large rebounds. So you know, things that go down come back up and, and you know, that creates a lot more volatility in the data as well, because if output rebounds fast and the input are the other way around, you have huge impacts on productivity. And then something we're going to really spend some time on in this paper is that you get shifts in employment shares between sectors. And of course, you've seen that very much during COVID. You know, hospitality service and other sort of, you know, first services that are impacted by social distancing lost a lot of share in the economy in terms of employment. So you shift more employment shares to other sectors and these sectors may have higher or lower productivity. But there you can make adjustments and there are various methods to deal with the reallocation. That's what to some extent this paper is about. And then finally, of course, our government interventions, both stimulus programs, business stimulus programs that Stephen Roper will talk about a little later, but also furlough programs that again affect the outputs and the inputs in different ways. So there are all sorts of reasons why you don't want to do this. And here is nevertheless why we did want to do something. So first of all, we really felt that it was useful to take a look at these reallocation effects, if only to sort of then sort of separate out or isolate the within-industry effects, because that's kind of the more informative thing, that once you take account of shifts, you know, what's happening within a particular sector and how does that compare to what happened before the crisis or what could possibly happen after the crisis. Once we've done that, another way to actually see at some of the impact of the numbers is to begin to apply some taxonomies of things that we're particularly interested in when it comes to productivity. So in earlier work with my co-authors, Klaas de Vries and Abdul Eirun Ban are my two co-authors and previous work that I just published in the National Institute of Economic Review, we looked at digital intensity by industry and I'll come back to that in a minute. We continue to use the taxonomy here, but then we added another taxonomy here and that is specifically related obviously to the crisis and that it looks at intensity in working from home. So which industries tend to have higher levels of working from home? And for that, we can make use of the American Time Use Survey and we use those data to sort of develop a few industry taxonomies of, you know, industries that were using these kinds of technologies more or less intensively. And then, of course, once we've done that, we can see how does that compare to the longer term? And can we see that those within-industry productivity dynamics align with what we have been seeing in the longer term? So that's really what we're trying to achieve in this paper. Now, let's first look a little bit at sort of the numbers as they're being published. And as I said, we look in this paper at the UK, but also at the West and France, although I will mainly focus on the UK here. So let me just talk about the UK here and you can just look at the numbers, real GDP, total hours worked and labour productivity. This is just the numbers as they come out of ONS. And you can see that, you know, the volatility in these productivity numbers is really the result of the fact that outputs and inputs declined or recovered in quarter three at different rates. So you know, you get the decline in quarter two, but then you get this huge rebound in productivity. But that's really because, you know, GDP rebounded more than employment did and therefore you get an uptick in productivity, whereas in the quarter four, you can actually the opposite. At the end of the day, there's about an 0.4% productivity increase in the UK, which is slightly less than a long-term average, but actually not dramatically below. But a lot of this is of course the result of reallocations, as I mentioned earlier, that have been happening and that's what we really want to tease out. The other thing, looking at the chart here on the left side, is I think interesting and that the dynamics between countries are quite different. So the orange line here is the UK, which I just discussed, but you can see that the dynamics of the US and France tend to be quite different. And some of that is related to the timing of the furlough program and the support programs, but also more generally, the extent to which economies have been locked down or not. But that's one other occasion to discuss these other countries in more detail. So as I said, a real interest we had was to look at sort of what kind of methods can we do to, you know, tease out the reallocation effects, so that we can really focus on the within-industry effects. Now, there are multiple methods to do this and in practice, these normally these methods don't differ a lot, but actually during this crisis, they actually did. So, so one that is probably mostly used and we have used a lot in the past is an hours reallocation effect where you basically split out the within-sector productivity growth and you weigh that by output weights. This case is a torn crystal, a value-added weighted output weight. And then you have an hours reallocation effect, which again you wait with the same output weights to see what kind of shifts are happening between sectors. So you split out what is the within part, the within-industry part, and what is the impact on aggregate productivity from these reallocations. Another method to apply is a shift share type of reallocation. It's, you know, I'm not going to spend too much time on the difference between these methods, but here I think what is particularly important is that you use employment rates rather than output weights. And also that's to tease out the within-industry effect. And then the allocation effect, you can make a distinction between static shift effects and dynamic shift effects. So static shift effects are really movements between high productivity level sectors or low productivity level sectors, or shifts between sectors with different levels of productivity. That's the dynamic shift effect really relates to shift towards sectors that have higher or slower productivity growth. And teasing those two out is actually a good thing to do. Now, in earlier work, we used actually the first methodology, the hours reallocation method. But in this paper, we wanted to proceed with the shift share for a couple of reasons. One reason is indeed that, you know, we can make this distinction between dynamic and static shift effects. But also actually the shift share allocation adds up. If you aggregate it up, it aggregates up to an unweighted, you know, aggregate labour productivity growth, whereas the hours reallocation effect will give you an aggregate productivity growth rate that is different from the unweighted productivity growth rate that you would find. So that's a reason why shift share is also attractive. I have to say, ONS is using a slightly different reallocation method. It builds on the hours reallocation method, but it also adds in changing price effects between industries. So it's not just about shifting resources or employment with industries that have higher or lower productivity growth rates or levels, but also different price effects. And this is a method based on Tang and Wang, but there's quite a bit of discussion in the literature about whether this is the right or wrong method. We haven't adopted this method here yet, but we'll probably do it in a later version. Now, the good news of all this is that if at the end of the day, you look at these reallocation methods, they're not very different, except during volatile times. And that's indeed what you can see here in this chart. So here, if you look at the blue line and the yellow line, we're comparing the reallocation effect from the styro or the output weighted work and the total reallocation from the shift share. And you can see they're very aligned over the years. It's only during the crisis that they deviate somewhat, but even then they don't deviate very dramatically. So just for the sake of your information, this is kind of the method that ONS is applying. So there's an important message here and that is that it really depends on the level of the number of industries that you use for your reallocation. So if you only use the very aggregated effect of only a limited number of very large sectors, then of course these reallocation effects are much smaller than if you use at a much more granular industry level. So you can see these, these kinds of distinctions happening here and seeing that they make quite substantial differences. Here's some work that we did ourselves by looking at the ONS numbers. And here you can basically see the difference between sort of the aggregate productivity growth rate. So this is unweighted. And then once you do sort of the weighted labour productivity growth rate with the value-added rates. And the blue bars is basically the reallocation effect. So you can really see what is happening here. There's a big sort of positive reallocation effect happening in the second quarter productivity growth. It would have been much lower if these shifts had not happened. And then there is some correction in the blue bars in quarter three and in quarter four, but not yet making up for the big positive effect that we had in the second quarter. Okay, so having done the reallocation, let's now go to the taxonomies part of the story and see what sort of results we could tease out from that. Now, this is a very busy chart, but basically this shows the level of industries that we're looking at. And we basically applied sort of free taxonomies. The first taxonomy is basically a sector taxonomy. We divided the economy up into six sectors, manufacturing, and then we separated hospitality and culture out of market services, obviously, because hospitality and culture was affected in a much bigger way than many other industries. So hospitality culture separately, non-market services, I see this is not quite right. Other industries is there as well. So those are the sectors that we're looking at, the five, not six, sorry about that. The second and the third are more interesting. The second is really looking at this working from home part. So what we could there is we could go to the American Time Use Survey and there we can see sort of the share of employees that are working from home as a percentage of total employment. And you can tease these numbers out of the American Time Use Survey. You can look at it by industry. We took the average for 2011 to 2019. So this is what happened before the crisis. But we kind of assumed that, you know, some industries are then better positioned to accelerate working from home than other industries. So we basically took three quartiles and we put the industries, as you can see on the right-hand side, into the top quartile, which is high working from home. Then the median is the second and the third quartile. And the low working from home is the fourth quartile. And there are some obvious cases, obviously quite a few services have much higher working from home shares than this occasion, very manufacturing industries. But again, there are some surprises here as well. You know, for example, textiles and wearing apparel turns out to be a high working from home industry. I don't quite know why, but I think on the whole, this, this kind of taxonomy makes sense. And then the final taxonomy is a digital intensity taxonomy. That's what we use in our earlier work, where we basically make a distinction between first of all, digital producing industries, so it's five industries here that are digital producing. And then the rest of the industries, the industries we divided into one, the half, the median of industries that is using digital technology more intensively and the other half, the lower half, using digital technology less intensively. And as a criterion, we use investment in IT, but also spending on IT services, because that's such an important part of digital economy now, that you can't only look at digital investment, but you also need to look at digital spending. And that gives us this kind of distinction. And again, some, not quite surprising, but some interesting things that again, a lot of services are actually most digital intensive. Quite a few manufacturing industries are not as digital intensive with some exceptions like machinery and transport equipment and things like that. So once we had those three distinctions, we could now begin to have a look at the 2020 numbers. But before we did that, we first looked at what is actually the productivity? What's the normal value-added share and hour share of these various taxonomies? And what is the productivity performance? So the sector-wise, of course, we see that hospitality and culture has much lower levels of productivity compared in the total economy than the rest. And that of course creates this very large reallocation effect, positive reallocation effect that I was talking about earlier, because the share of hospitality and culture in 2020 declines very significantly. Working from home is interacting the industries where you have a high incidence of working from home are definitely industries that have higher levels of productivity. And then of course, digital producing industries have very high levels of productivity. But actually, when you look at digital intensive using and less digital intensive using, it's not obvious in 2019 that most digital intensive industries tended to have higher productivity levels. This is not growth rates, but this is level. So, so, and this is important just to understand some of the, of the reallocation effects. So here are then the results for 2020. Here's the historical results, then you get the three quarter, four quarters, sorry, and the 2020 over 2019 numbers, lots of numbers here. So maybe focus a little bit on the left-hand side here on sort of what we're teasing out in terms of results right now. So if you look at the sector distribution, which is the top panel here, you basically see that there's of course, most of the volatility is in hospitality and culture. I mean, huge productivity volatility, as you can see, and year over, year over year, 2020 over 2019, there was a 30% decline in labour productivity in hospitality and culture. Interestingly, other services sectors, market services without hospitality and culture and non-market services actually came out positive. And that is actually quite interesting to have, to, to, to see. For example, in non-market services, Diane will talk in a minute about healthcare specifically. We know actually there was a big decline in productivity there. The same is true for education. However, these numbers are just aggregate numbers. So that includes reallocations within each of these industries. So in non-market services, even though healthcare had a big decline in productivity growth, it has relatively high levels of productivity compared to other sectors in other industries in the non-market services sector. So overall, you still get a positive result. So it really matters sort of what level of aggregation you are looking at. But if you look at this level of aggregation, including those reallocation effects, I will look at the within effects just in a minute separately. You can actually see there is that the market service has come out more positive. Also here in, in working from home, you actually see the best results in working from home productivity from the medium, from the medium work from home estimates. The reason why that high working from home didn't do very well is that two sectors were very dominant. One was real estate and the other one was education. They're both sectors with high, with high work from home. Particularly real estate bothers us, it had, you know, because it's one of those sectors where productivity, frankly, is a fairly meaningless concept, given the way that output is measured. And one of the things we're considering to actually to kick out a real estate from, from this category, because that's messing up some of the results here without real estate. You know, the high working from home would have been higher. Digital producing and using, that makes a little bit more sense when you look at it. You can see that obviously digital producing is having, oops, I have an fire alarm here, which is what I had not expected just a second. Okay, one more second. Yeah, it's gone. Good.
You've got about another five minutes anyway.
That's, I don't need more than five minutes and I, I will even forego the 30 seconds that I lost because of the fire alarm. So, so you can see that some of these results make sense, others don't. Actually, what is interesting here is that the aggregate number that we're finding here for productivity growth 2020 over 2019 is 1.3, rather than the 0.4 that ONS is publishing. And that actually is the result of some balancing that ONS is doing when they use these output aggregated numbers that compare with expenditure and income measures of GDP. And that actually has pushed down productivity growth to 0.4%. If you would not do that rebalancing, productivity growth for the aggregate economy would actually be higher. But as I said, this is including reallocation effects. So we really wanted to focus on the within effects, because the within effects is really sort of looking clean on what is happening within each of those industries. And there the results tend to be quite different. You can see first of all, in the aggregate, that, you know, overall, these reallocation effects have been dominating, but the within effects have been negative. And when you look in the various taxonomies, it's been pretty much across the board. I mean, in manufacturing and other industries, it's been slightly positive. But in all the other market services, despite some market services having positive growth effects, once you take out the reallocations, all these sectors, including non-market services and relating to the healthcare study that Diane is going to talk about, all show negative effects. Same is true for high, medium and low work from home, as well as for, for the most digital intensive industries as well. So a lot more to say about it and I'm happy to come back to that during the Q&amp;A. Let me just make my, this is my last slide, make a few concluding observations. So first of all, what we find is that services within sector services productivity growth was clearly most effective. Retail was actually, I should have said that a little earlier, a notable exception, because they had actually significant productivity improvement. But otherwise, most of the remaining productivity growth was in manufacturing and other industries. We do see that most digital intensive using industries remained on track to continue to perform better than the least digital intensive using industries. And that's aligning with the pre-pandemic trend. So that's encouraging that we actually did see that digital intensive industries continued to perform better once you take out all these reallocation effects. Intensive work from home showed no clear advantage, but we think that the real estate numbers are messing up a little bit of that picture. So some next steps, this, this work is not yet completed. So here's where we are. One is that we would like to experiment a little bit with other reallocation methods, for example, the ONS method, which is different from what we used here. We probably need to adjust for some productivity unfriendly industries like real estate. I said we'll do more work on France and the US. There's a little bit more in the appendix slides here, which I will not spend time on today. And then as follow-up work, we'd like to do a little bit more work on correlating these different taxonomies and see if there are possible clusters where we see both digital intensive industries and high working from home being combined. And finally, we're playing with some work on regional location. We have a very detailed US county dataset by industry, where we can begin to identify which industries tend to be more urban-like versus industries that tend to be more suburban or rural-like. And that will help us to understand if we have been seeing better productivity performance during a pandemic in urban areas rather than suburban or rural or just the other way around. So that's another piece of work that's forthcoming. But with that, let me stop, Tony, and if happy to take any questions.
Good, thank you Bart. We're open, we're open for questions now. I don't see any in the box right now, assuming I'm looking at the right box, which I think I am. However, Diane has her hand up, so a physical one. Diane, go ahead.
Well, others are typing. Can I just ask Bart if you might be able to look at sectors where there was a shift from working from home patterns in 2019 to a very different pattern in 2020? Would you expect the same places to be more productive, doing more working from home? Or are there opportunities for productivity gains when it was a new thing?
Yeah, so I, I, my understanding is, and Klaas de Vries is on the line, so we could open up him if he wants to comment on this. But my understanding is that we did not yet have the 2020 data for working from home from the American Time Use Survey. But once we have it, we can of course begin to see the shifts. So our current assumption is indeed that industries that had high working from home incidences before the crisis were able to actually ramp that up further later on. And I think there's a lot of sort of corroborating evidence that's the case. But surely there may have been some industries where we have been seeing some catching up. And it would be interesting to see if once we're going to look at that taxonomy for 2020 rather than 2019, when there's a difference. Klaas, I can see that you're on. Do you want to add to that?
No, that's broadly correct, I think Bart. So ONS has released working from home data as well, as we saw. However, it's available on a less detailed industry sector base. So that's why we for now stick to the American Time Use Survey, because it gives us much more detail on the industry side. And that is of course necessary for our taxonomy work.
Thanks, John.
Great, thanks. I mean Bart, can I ask, is there anything that really surprised you in these results? I mean, what, what leapt out? What made you think, wow?
Well, I think, I think the surprising part was is actually that overall services industries, once you, once you took out the reallocation effect, overall services industry is really underperformed. And in most industries, we see negative growth rates. If you go at the very detailed table, yeah, there are some industries where we saw an uptick in productivity. But in a way, I would say the, there's much more, a bigger dichotomy in within-sector productivity growth in goods and sectors than in services sectors. You know, we, you would think that this was primarily true for the social distancing industries, but apparently it was not, you know, pretty much across the board. We have a few exceptions. We did see these very large declines in services. So and then there's of course the, the reallocation effect that we really need to pull out here. I don't think it was a surprise that the reallocation effects were so large, but it was a bit of a surprise on how that evolved over the various quarters and that the reallocation hasn't been corrected fully yet and that we need parts of 2021 before we'll see that.
So any lessons from this for what's going to happen next?
Yeah, so. Yeah, yeah. So, so I think what we do find, because that's why we compared it with the historical data as well, is that we, that we wanted to see if digital intensive using industries were doing better. And overall, the question is that they didn't decline as much within, which is good. So digital intensity does pay off. And I would assume it's continuing to pay off in the post-pandemic period. And the other part is that the working from home is that at the moment we don't see big productivity gains in the working from home category. So I think another interesting question going forward is whether working from home, industries that do a lot of working from home are going to have a productivity advantage over industries that don't. And I don't think that's obvious from the 2020 data yet. And then finally, as I said, we're working on this regional allocation. It's a little bit early to look at these data, but I'd be very interested to see whether industries that have more of a rural or suburban incident have performed differently in productivity growth than cities, than industries that are more dependent on city centres.
Okay, great, thank you. Let me remind people, prompt people that they can post questions in the Q&amp;A box. And more than welcome to do so. But time, time is up. We should move on to the next presentation, which is Diane Coyle on health service productivity during the pandemic. And that looks very seamless transition to slides. So Diane, over to you.
Thanks very much and hello, everybody. Some of you who attended the panel session yesterday afternoon would have heard part of the setup of this paper already. So apologies for the repetition. Measuring non-market public service output productivity is clearly a challenge at the best of times and it's exercised many great minds in the past, not least Tony Atkinson in his landmark report on this. And it's an important issue in general for the Productivity Institute, not least because of the scale of non-market services in the economy. But it's obviously been particularly pressing this year. So this is a piece of work, if I can find out how to move on, with my co-authors, Annabelle Manley, who is on the call, so I can turn to her if I need to, and Kaya Dreisbein-Diak. And I want to just emphasize, because I suspect this is mainly an audience of economists, that this was both an interdisciplinary piece of work, because Kaya is an engineer, and also mixed methods in the sense that a lot of the work was a series of semi-structured interviews with senior leaders in two major hospital trusts, coded up in a normal way with the software, qualitative software. And I think as an aside, this is one of the strengths that we see in the Productivity Institute approach, that we will have interdisciplinary pieces of work and a range of methods used. So the starting point for thinking about health, and I'm not a health economist at all, it was the overall figures for UK output during the course of 2020 and in particular, comparing the profile of the changes for the with what was happening in some other countries such as France and Germany. And there was a flurry of headlines suggesting that perhaps ONS had got its measurement of public service output wrong, particularly health and education, because the pattern looked so much worse in the UK than others. And so if you look at the profile of the quarters, you can see these very different profiles between quarter two and quarter three for the different countries. So the UK is the red blocks, much bigger drop in Q2, not such a big increase in Q3 compared to France, which is somewhat similar. And then very different patterns for Germany and Italy and somewhat different for the Netherlands as well. So there are obviously really different things going on between the different countries. And we heard from And we heard from Paul Schreier yesterday, this is an issue that O N S and the OECD are going to be looking at to understand better the contribution of different methodologies to these different profiles as opposed to different events on the ground. There were though different events on the ground. And just as a reminder, part of the explanation of the profile will be demand. And so these are the daily new confirmed cases. And here you see that there are somewhat different profiles through the course of 2020, that that's going to be part of the story. And to evaluate, you know, in this size and anything about the pandemic, we're probably going to have to wait a while until we get a more conclusive picture about what's happened. Because we're not quite through it yet. So let me step back and talk a little bit about how the measurement of productivity in healthcare has changed over time. So as everybody here will know, it started out being straightforward outputs equals inputs. And it was the 1993 revision that recommended a shift to direct output measures. O N S implemented this shift recently promptly. But paradoxically, although this is meant to give a better indication of what every perceived as productivity advances, it showed productivity declines in the UK in the late 1990s. And this led to the commissioning of the landmark Atkinson Review, who said the question really ought to be what difference did any public service activity, but any health service activity make to health? And recommended the use of direct output measures with very detailed selection of what those measures ought to be. And when possible, they should be quality adjusted. The 2008 revision adopted that approach. And we have been implementing the ESA 2010 version, which in the national accounts does not do the quality adjustment. There are separate public service productivity measures for the UK that do quality adjustment. But the national accounts figures that I showed a couple of slides ago, they're not doing quality adjustment, but they are using, to the extent possible, these direct output measures. So that's what we're doing today. About 10% is still the old convention. That's the obvious collective ones. And the rest of the measure of what's called quantity output, where the current period change is the sum of the changes in each of the separate activities at quite a detailed level, weighted by their costs. So one general issue here is that if you get a cost decrease, that's a technological change. So for example, if people are able to be treated with cataracts and it's much cheaper because they're not inpatients and it's standardized and there are better outcomes, then that has a paradoxical effect on the productivity measure. But then the other issue, which is the one that we've been struggling with this year, is what happens when the activity mix changes substantially during the year. And this is a story of weights and index numbers. If you look at the weights that are used in those UK figures, you can see that most of it is the things that are most of the activities going to the G P, elective care, outpatient and attendances, prescription drugs. And critical care has a weight of just 3% in this total. What we saw during 2020 was a vast surge in critical care use and a vast decline in all of those elective care G P visits and so on. In addition, there have been some new activities to bring into bear as well. But if you're using this quantity output approach, then what you're getting is a potential downward bias in the activity measure. But also, at the same time, those declines in other activities have been substantial and real. And I think there's an open question about how do we want to account for those? And, you know, thinking not in a mechanical way, but in a fundamental economic welfare way about about those different weights. Germany, by contrast, as Paul Troy was explaining yesterday, uses a different approach, which is to inflate spending with prices using current period weights and their figures have an upward bias as a result. And so part of this is a story about the weights and how to select those. And that will be something that O N S needs to think about carefully going forward. But it's also partly a story about real changes in people's experience of the healthcare, depending on what person they are. Are they a COVID patient? Or are they a patient requiring cancer care or some elective care? And then a further question that I'll come back to about the role of surplus capacity in the health service and what part that plays. This chart shows you the steep decline in some of the other activities. And so as we go along from left to right, first is elective care, other non-elective care outpatient appointment for the middle two blocks, A and E and visits to the G P. And so you have seen, you can see this pale gray bar, 2020 Q two, showing large declines in quite a number of these categories. Even surprisingly, we found in the qualitative research in pediatric A and E, where you would have thought that was, if you like, the least responsive to not going in because of the pandemic situation. And we'll have all read the newspapers and know that the NHS now faces an enormous backlog of cases in these different categories to deal with. And another thing to come back to is the use of technology and what implications that might have for productivity in health as we look forward. And I mentioned new activities, so here's the vaccinations chart, which came in in January. There was test and trade starting last year and also Nightingale hospitals with their surge capacity. So as well as the weights on existing activities, there have been issues about both the data sources and how to bring into bear these new activities too. So the key question, one key question, I think, is what's the right perspective to take? Do we want to take the 2019 perspective and see this year as a real decline? Do we want to take a counterfactual perspective and completely appreciate that all of the extra critical critical care cover this year was a genuine increase in output compared to the world where we didn't have COVID? Or is it some, is the truth somewhere in between? And that's, that's a sort of quite fundamental issue, I think. Having looked at the top-down data, what we wanted to do was look in depth in some hospital trust to understand better how they had coped with the dramatic change in demand patterns, the pressures on staff and the speed with which knowledge about the disease and how to treat it was moving. So we carried out, and this was mainly our colleague Kaya, who worked as an engineer in Adambrooks during the pandemic to help them model better space use and patient flow. And is still working at Adambrooks. Semi-structured interviews with a range of senior leaders in Adambrooks and in Manchester Foundation Trust. And so the coding of the interviews revealed some very interesting patterns. The full working paper has much more detailed categories, but I aggregated these back up here. And what struck me was that the first two most important that the senior leaders in hospitals talked about was the operational changes and the governance issues. And highlighting the extent to which the ability of the hospitals to cope had really relied on some really very significant changes in operation and in the governance processes for proving what could happen and even things like procurement processes. A number of other issues came up too, much less obviously in the coding, but I will just pick out here. The buildings, which is something I certainly hadn't realized before, reading through all the interviews and talking to people there, was that the extra demand on space, which will be a lasting impact on hospital productivity, because hospitals need green amber and red zones, green zones, which you know are patients who and staff who are free of the infection. Red zones where you're treating COVID patients, amber zones where you don't know yet. And this has led to substantial reallocations of space use. And given that with the foreseeable future, there will be much tighter infection control procedures and also the need for space for donning and doffing personal protective equipment. That's a sort of lasting reduction in the building's efficiency of hospitals. And another is technology, which, on which there's been a lot of focus, and I'm going to come back to that in a moment. So if we think about what are the longer-term potential impacts on productivity that we learned about? One of them is about staff and the lengths of training for skilled hospital staff, which runs all the way through the quotes hierarchy. So it isn't just that doctors take a long time to train and have specialists and nurses too. And the big bottleneck in staffing has been ICU nurses rather than any other category of staff. But also, an immense amount of retraining was needed for all of the staff in hospitals, cleaning members' staff, authors and so on. And so there will be some lasting effects of that. The NHS turns out to have not very sophisticated staff projections. And I think one of the lessons that they might take is the need to think about both manpower planning, to use the old-fashioned phrase, but also the route to training and upskilling members of staff and the extent to which it will be an advantage to have people who are less specialized and more fungible between different activities. I've already talked about the building use. Technology is really interesting because a lot of the focus in the media has been on patient interactions using video conferencing. So this has been a dramatic increase and the NHS has got as far in the course of a year that expected to get in many, many years in switching towards video consultations. One of the things that we don't know about is the effect on patient outcomes. It's clearly a more better use of time, both for medical staff and for patients. But it doesn't, we don't know yet what the effect is on outcomes or whether it just means that people need more appointments to get the same outcomes. There are also big distributional issues because patients need kits for this to work. At a minimum, a smartphone, possibly other devices too, to be able to be monitored and diagnosed remotely in this way. Two other important bits of technology change to think about in the NHS. And one is innovation in treatment and the rather limited extent to which the procurement power of the NHS is used to drive innovation. The vaccines example is a fantastic demonstration of how powerful that can be. And thinking more about that would be important in the future. And then the other is technology use within the organization itself and the use of data, the use of patient data and electronic patient records, and also the use of technology in organization. And as in any firm where technology is being introduced, it's only going to have big productivity impacts if it changes what people can do. And so people need decision-making power. If there are fantastic electronic patient records and seamlessly joined up and it's available at each bedside, then who are the staff who are trained and have the authority to make decisions based on the information that's coming out of that? And so that kind of technology use has implications for NHS organization. We're going to go through another one of those. There's been a big step back in the new white paper from the market-oriented approach to NHS services. And much more focused now, this is already a lesson, I think, from the past year on collaboration and moves towards, for example, vertical integration between primary care surgeries and hospitals. That I think is likely to continue. And then one of the big messages I took from the work was thinking about the health system as part of the nation's infrastructure, part of the provision by the public sector that enables productivity throughout the economy. And in particular, if you think about the infrastructure, this question of peak loading or resilience becomes quite important because we don't run any other infrastructure as hot as the NHS had been run before the pandemic. Right at the start, I drew the contrast between Germany and the UK. And in 2019, there was a good deal of criticism of the German healthcare system for being having too much spare capacity and being inefficient. But that's something that has served them well between the past 12 or 15 months. And so I think we should probably reflect on what, how much insurance do we want to buy in our health service? Given this past year's experience and the prospect of more zoonotic diseases emerging in the future. So I think we've paid a high price for that short run cost efficiency. And then my final point is about that patient backlog that I referred to earlier and what the impact is going to be on health outcomes, something that we're not going to know for a while. But it takes us back to those broader issues that have to think about public service productivity and the difference between output and outcomes. And so here it's just a schema. And this will be, you know, very familiar stuff, but lots of things affect health outcomes. It isn't just, doesn't just fall from the sky. And so in a broader sense, if we're thinking about the NHS as infrastructure, are we also thinking about the impact of all of these other things in the bubble on the right on health demand? And on how much of that infrastructure we're going to need to provide? So that's all from me and I'll stop sharing and obviously happy to take any questions.
Great, if you could leave your slides up, it doesn't matter if you put them down. Okay, there does seem to be considerable reticence amongst the audience to ask questions. So let me, let me prompt people to put some questions up. And in the meantime, what, Diane, what should we do about measuring health service productivity? Do we just say, well, this was a one-off? I mean, we're in a situation where something becomes more socially valuable. You move resources into something that's become more valuable and the value of output falls. I mean, it's such a nonsense. I mean, what do we do going forwards?
But I think it's time, this is an opportunity to have a think about what we should be measuring, what's useful to measure in the context of the health service. And Bart and I spoke yesterday to Jennifer Dixon, who's head of Health Foundation. And one of the things she's pointed out is that this isn't useful information for people running the health service. They don't have what they need to know for kind of management information purposes. The figures are very volatile, both between trusts and within trusts. We don't know how to think about that vertical integration and what the impact of that would be. And so this seems a good moment to bring together people from the health service and economists and statisticians and engineers like Kaya and have us think about what we should be measuring. And it isn't at all obvious to me that that, you know, either the national accounts approach or actually the Atkinson approach is exactly what we want to be doing.
Okay, I have a question here from Joseph Haines. So if people, Joseph, can you introduce yourself and ask your question?
Yeah, good afternoon. I'm Joseph Haines from Statistics Netherlands. I have a question on spare capacity in the health service and how that would impact on any productivity measures. So I think there's a question to whether COVID is a moral dilemma or a capacity dilemma. And in the health service, it's clearly on one side a capacity dilemma. There weren't enough beds, hospitals, doctors and nurses to cope with the impact of it. So in a theoretical sense, if you massively increase the amount of doctors, hospitals, nurses, so you could cope with something like COVID in the future, but that only happened once every, hopefully 50, 100 or even 10 years, how would you account for that in the years in between where you are running, you know, very low productivity industry because you have such spare capacity? But then you do need it once in a blue moon. So how would that impact on productivity measures and output?
Thanks, Joseph. I'd like to hear your own answer to your question too. And so my first, I've got a couple of thoughts about that. One is that if we had had more spare capacity in the NHS, then the declines in other activities and the consequent outcomes would not have been so severe. And so if we look back at that counterfactual, we'd have had a better 2020. And the other is that we probably should be trying to take some kind of risk-adjusted perspective on this. And in a different context, one of my colleagues has been thinking about this in terms of climate change. And given that climate change impacts are likely to affect agricultural productivity in some way, should we start thinking about risk-adjusting productivity measures? So perhaps you could take that, that view of it. And or you could just take a much more exogenous view and say, if we run a power station, the electricity grid with 5% spare capacity, then 5% is a, you know, sensible number to use in any piece of infrastructure. I don't know that any of those is obviously the single right answer. So what do you think, Joseph?
Yeah. Back on that quickly, I really do not have a flood of questions, of course, if you want to come back quickly, Joseph.
Um no, no, I wasn't expecting to have to answer my own question. I don't think I have an answer, but I think, I think it's a, it's a very difficult one for productivity measures. If you just simply go for, you know, dividing out output by input and, you know, what do you do in these extreme events when, you know, you do need the spare capacity, which otherwise would be lead to, you know, indications of the under productivity or low productivity. Yeah.
But sorry to
Okay, Thomas, Thomas Trips has a, has a question. Can you unmute and if you'd like to ask it, Thomas?
Thank, thank you. Uh hello, it's Thomas Trips from uh Loughborough University. Uh thank you very much for that interesting talk. Um my question is about something you alluded to already. Of course, uh you know, as some people argue, the NHS is all about uh stopping you from dying rather than being healthy. Um so of course, if the output is the wrong one or arguably the wrong one, then of course the whole exercise of measuring productivity is sort of very questionable. So, so to what extent can you elaborate on how we need to sort out the desired output first?
Um yeah, thanks, Thomas. Um there was a paper by David Mounseth at Imperial and some of his colleagues who argued, and I think they got the argument wrong because they put the paper out at the wrong time, but they argued that you needed to look retrospectively in terms of some outcome measure standardized, um you know, quality death adjusted life years. And if we wanted to do that, we couldn't do it for quite some time because of things like waiting for the out of delayed cancer treatment on on mortality rates, for example. Um but it does strike me that if we think we've got, we shouldn't be looking at outputs but at outcomes in some broader sense, then if we want to think about productivity, we need to look at a different range of inputs in order to measure it. And so you would be thinking not only about uh the obvious health service inputs there, but also public health inputs, environmental inputs such as um air quality that we know has led to respiratory disease and more vulnerability to COVID. So the, the, the sort of inputs to outcomes um correspondence can still be there, but you'd have a different set of inputs going to a different set of outcomes.
Great, thanks. Richard, Richard Hayes. You want to unmute and go ahead?
Righto. Um my question was thinking about the point that Diane raised around weights and whether there's merit in thinking about treating new services like test and trace and the increase in vaccinations as effectively as a new service outside health to try and minimise the weight change within health provision. I'm, I'm not sure that would do enough because critical care has grown so, so rapidly over the, the time period that we're discussing, but would it be a, a beneficial approach for us to consider to effectively take test and trace and vaccination as an alternative service rather than components of the health service?
Um I, I, I might, I think I'd go about thinking about that by thinking about their longevity, Richard. And uh in both cases, I suspect they're going to be around for a while, so um thinking about them as, as a new activity might be the way to go in that case. Whereas the nightingale hospitals haven't been much used and will, will not be there for the long term. So you'd want to bundle those into the missing. I, I'm rather glad this is your problem, not mine, in reality.
Yes.
Then you put yourself about how, what the answer ought to be.
I think it's still something that we're, we're considering. I think we see the merits of exploring um that as an idea. As you say, I think the key question is longevity and trying to find a base price um for test and trace. Vaccination is a bit easier because you do have flu vaccinations that happen every year. So you've got something to work from, but test and trace is a bit different. There, there was nothing like it in twenty nineteen. And so to work out how exactly to play it through is, is more difficult, I think.
But they're not comfortable activities within public health. Because I think local authorities had um other kinds of contact going on. That might be a place to start.
Although they're probably of a significantly different scale. Hmm. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um time for one last question. Sheila, Sheila Page, if you can unmute and come in, that would be great.
Thank you, Sheila Page, ODI. I, again, it's a bit on the boundaries of what you count as health services output. I wanted to know whether you looked at the uh forms or the supply of social care and whether that influences the productivity of health services and whether would ever any changes in that which could explain or not explain changes in healthcare productivity.
Yeah, that's a really good question, Sheila, but a really big question. I'm sure you appreciate. Um and we uh a- as a nation haven't figured out how to integrate health and social care. And one of the big barriers has been that social care has always been means tested and the government's backing away from doing anything about this quickly again. Um if you want to think about health outcomes of the pandemic, then clearly um we have to think about um what, what the impact from social care and mortality in our outcomes there has been. We, we didn't look at it directly and this is my easy answer to your question. Um but I think this actually speaks to the broader agenda of um, you know, and this is the question Productivity Institute is looking at, which is we care about output and conventional productivity measures, but we care about broader outcomes measures too. And um that brings in a much more complex set of interacting interacting factors when you're thinking about what contributes to outcomes. Though referring back to my answer to Thomas, you can look at different kinds of um uh outcomes, linking these two, but then you get a whole different set of inputs going into it.
Sheila, do you want to come back on that?
No, uh I, I, I didn't think there was going to be an, an easy answer, but it might also affect some international comparisons, I thought.
Yeah, that's a good point, actually. I, I think the answer to it's, it's really complicated.
Yes.
One of the, one of those areas where it's very easy for sort of theorists to say, oh, the shadow prices on all these things, we can just, you know, apply the shadow prices, but uh clearly the practical aspects thereof are overwhelmingly difficult and will probably become increasingly important. So um thank you, thank you, Diane. We should um, we should move on. Um so the last paper in this section, session is gonna be given by Stephen Roper. It's a paper with co-authors Halima Jabril and Mark Hart. The title is now in front of you. It's assessing um government schemes, the productivity impact of support measures during COVID nineteen. Uh so Stephen, over to you.
Thank you very much, Tony. Um so this is another paper which is going to feature treatments um and wellbeing, but in a slightly different sense, I think, to uh the sense in which Diane was talking about it. Uh we're interested here in the, in looking at some of the early effects of some of the government's COVID nineteen support measures, particularly for, for SMEs. Um I guess that um we're still struggling at this point for firm data on the productivity outcomes at the firm level um based on any sort of quantitative survey data or, or evaluation data. Um so what we're going to do here is we're going to draw on an approach from the evaluation literature uh and look at a couple of behavioural changes that the government's support measures might be inducing in firms and the way then that those might influence future productivity outcomes, perhaps over the next six to nine months. Uh so uh we'll look at some logic models, uh we'll look at some treatment effects and we're going to look at two particular uh outcome variables here. Uh the effect of uh furlough and loan schemes on firms' future in- investment intentions and also at some aspects of employee wellbeing, uh which we'll see a little bit later on. So I guess that, just to sort of give us a, a sort of starting point for this, we expect that in times of crisis, um both uh investment and potentially, I suppose, uh employee wellbeing may be impacted negatively. Uh the empirical evidence across a number of different domains around capital equipment, around intangible investments uh suggests the strong pro-cyclical of the investment. So investment decline in, in, in periods of crisis and rising again in periods of, of recovery or boom. And I guess that we'd also think perhaps that times of crisis may also impact negatively on employee wellbeing. We've heard widespread concern over the last few years in, sorry, over the last few months in the media about the effects of the pandemic uh on employees' mental health and we'll come back to that uh in just a moment. So I suppose that when we think about the landscape of businesses, um I'm particularly interested here in small and medium sized companies, in other words, firms with one to two hundred and forty nine employees. Uh so you can think of these as uh single unit plants uh that may, as the ILO has suggested, be particularly vulnerable for to, to the kind of challenges that COVID nineteen has brought, um both in terms of limited market reach and so less risk sharing between markets, perhaps limited financial uh and managerial resources, uh which might make it more difficult to cope with some of the managerial and leadership challenge, challenges which COVID has faced. Again, if we look internationally, policy responses to COVID across different countries are varied markedly with very different emphases in different countries on different types of sort of measures. But common to most countries have been furlough type measures to support some short time working or temporary layoffs. Uh tax and deferral measures, which I won't look at here, but also some sort of loan guarantees or direct lending or grant support which to support firms uh and stim and help them with liquidity to, through the, through the crisis. Here we're going to look at the fo- the impact of three government support screen schemes. Uh the first is the coronavirus business interruption loan scheme or C bills, loan guarantee scheme essentially, uh money provided by UK banks, but guaranteed loans guaranteed uh by the UK government. Another programme, similar sort of structure, bounce back loans. The difference between the two loan schemes, differences in the amount of money available, slightly different eligibility criterias, slightly different grant criteria, uh support guarantee criteria uh from the government to the banks, but basically playing out in a similar way in terms of the business recipients. And the third scheme is the furlough scheme or the job retention scheme. This wage subsidy uh to cover the wage costs of employees unable to work. The scheme has changed through the pandemic. Employees are now paying a component or a larger component uh of that, of that um of that subsidy. Um but at the, the times we're considering, it was pretty well a hundred percent subsidy or, or eighty percent uh as we go through the, through the time period. So I suppose when we start thinking about um policy interventions, uh we start thinking about sort of logic models and trying to trace the way in which, or a theory of change, if you prefer, about the way in which these policy interventions may actually impact uh on outputs, outcomes and uh and finally impacts. And I guess our impact here at the end of the day is higher or lower productivity. Is a sort of prototype logic model for the loan schemes, uh CBIs and BBL. And I guess the key point here is that the outcome of those loan schemes is probably that firms have improved liquidity, that they get some strategic space to reinvest, to reinvent the firm potentially uh in the longer term to allow them to, uh to allow them to uh to generate higher productivity. If that is the case, if these schemes are having those effects, we would see that reflected in sort of positive investment intentions and that's the outcome variable that we'll be looking at here in these kind of short term assessments. I suppose if we think about furlough, the wage subsidies, then we might think about this in a different way. Uh furlough may change the kind of psychological contract between employee and employer with employees perhaps feeling grateful for being furloughed rather than made redundant uh and perhaps then motivated to work harder when they come back from the scheme. Or there may be, in fact, employees may have a chance to invest in their own human capital uh while they're on furlough. Uh and again, that may have higher productivity effects. And I guess that both of these opportunities, this feeling, these feelings about uh being supported as an employee and the opportunity to uh perhaps do self, some self investment in training, human capital, personal human capital development, might give you a sense of improved wellbeing and that's really what we're going to look at uh in a moment. So we're going to use two data sources here, both survey based data sources, both focused on small and medium sized companies. Uh for the investment analysis, the investment intention analysis, uh we're going to look at some data from something called the small, small, the SME finance monitor. This is a survey, quarterly survey supported by UK Finance, in other words, the major banks, uh of around four and a half thousand firms a quarter. It's a computer aided telephone survey with a group of firms which aims to be broadly representative of UK SMEs. And the estimation that I'm going to talk about in a second combines data for quarter three and quarter four twenty twenty. Our key dependent variables here, the target variables, are five binary investment intention indicators. Explore, exploring in which indicate whether firms think they are likely to invest in capital, innovation, exporting, employing more staff or other kinds of capital investment, other types of investment uh over the next year. And we have three indicators here of the kinds of policy support which firms have received. Furlough only, in other words, the wage subsidy only, furlough plus some loans, all the loans only. For our wellbeing analysis, we're going to use a different data set. Uh this covers around fifteen hundred firms across the East and West Midlands. It again was a CATTI survey of SME employers uh across these two regions, uh two regions, the East and West Midlands combined, have a population of around fifty million. So this covers around one fifth of the UK. Um survey was undertaken in twenty twenty one quarter one. Uh and the questions here relate to uh the last, uh the last um uh last year essentially. Here we have three wellbeing um measures. So we're asking the employer about their experience of experiencing uh periods of sickness due to mental health, periods of sickness absence and then repeated sickness absence as indicators of the wellbeing of their, of their, of their workforce. And we have two policy variables here, furlough only and furlough plus uh the loan schemes. It's not possible in this scenario to test the loan scheme only because there were very few firms in this particular period and this particular data set which had that combination of uh loan, loans only without furlough. So our modelling approach is similar in each case and I'll focus a little bit more today on the investment planning um s- uh uh story. And I'll say a little bit about the, the wellbeing one as we go towards the end. Uh we use a two in, two equation model and you can see it in the middle of the slide here, where we have a um structural equation which has the, the investment intention or investment plan as the dependent, the instrument to treatment on the right hand side and a bunch of firm level controls. And then we have a treatment variable which we're instrumenting using, using a series, a series of, of, of instruments. Um there's a bunch of firm level instruments in there, uh standard sort of biodemograph- biodemographic things in the firm sector size, band age, region, that kind of thing. But we're also using as a key instrument the density of receipt of each particular type of uh treatment by the sector in which the firm is located. Um so that's independent of the individual firm, but it gives you an, an indication of the likelihood that that particular firm would receive a particular combination of, of policy measures. And in each case, the reference group that we're using are firms which receive no support. So it's furlough versus no support, furlough plus grants versus no support and or, and then loans versus no support. So just to give you a bit of an indication about some of the descriptors that lie behind this, these are the proportion of firms planning uh investments of different types uh across twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, different waves uh of the SME finance monitor. And what you see here is that on the left hand pane, the proportion of firms actually planning capital investments in twenty twenty quarter three and twenty twenty quarter four, our analysis period, was actually higher than that in, in previous firms. So at this point in the pandemic in the UK, firms were actually, had actually fairly optimistic uh investment intentions relative to both the earlier pandemic period and the pre pandemic period. So this is maybe an illustration of some sort of opportunistic investment that's going on. And we see a similar pattern for investment plans in innovation and exporting, and also the other investment intention measures. If we look at the proportion of firms that were using these different kind of combinations of support across sectors. One here is primary through to nine other services, manufacturing and transport, communication, construction is somewhere in the middle. What you see is that apart from primary, the proportion of firms using furlough was relatively similar across these broad divisions. The loan schemes were slightly differently distributed, and the combination also slightly differently distributed. About 48% of firms were using furlough, around 4% the loan schemes alone. And 16% the combination of furlough and loan. Just to give you a kind of illustration of the sorts of models then that we've been estimating. Two equations, as I said, to take columns one and two on this chart, which is the furlough. Impact on, or modeling the furlough treatment on investment in capital equipment or intention to invest in capital. So we have an investment equation, we have the treatment model. And the treatment effects here, as you see, are all positive and very strongly significant. In other words, furlough, the combination of the loan schemes and furlough and the combination of the loan schemes. Were all strongly, positively associated with an increase in investment to invest in capital equipment. In the next year, as we actually would expect from the logic model. I've highlighted here at the bottom of the chart in the yellow box, just the instruments that we're using. And we could develop this, of course, but both of those prove strong and pretty robust. Instruments for treatment, and we can change the specification here and get very similar effects. So just to kind of summarize the key results. If we look at the first kind of problem, do these schemes actually lead to changes in investment intention? The answer is probably yes across the board. What we see in the top little table here. Is strong positive and significant treatment effects from furlough, the loan schemes alone. And furlough and the loan schemes across a range of different dimensions of innovative activity. If we look at the bottom table, then we see some of the well-being kind of effects. What we see here is that furlough is having exactly the kinds of effect that we anticipate. The firms that are in receipt of furlough, or furlough and the loan finance. Were less likely to have experienced mental health issues among their workforce. Than firms which had not received furlough or the combination of furlough and loans. But we find no significant effects in either sickness absence or repeat sickness absence. So it does look as if this well-being effect from furlough. Is actually working through mental health rather than sickness absence in terms of at least this early association. One of the other interesting aspects to this is to look at the impact through firm size, and I have about three more slides to. Just to stop you worrying. The first effect here is, this is the marginal effects or the treatment effects. By firm size for investment intention and capital equipment. The first pane here on the left are the marginal effects of treatment from furlough only. And what you see is that the furlough effect in smaller firms, two to 10 employees. Is significantly higher than that in larger SMEs 200-plus. So it seems as if the additionality effect of furlough. Is greater in these smaller firms than it is in larger firms in terms of investment intention. We don't see the same picture in either in terms of the loan schemes or the furlough plus loan schemes on the two right-hand. Paints here, although again, significant effects, but just not the size gradient that we see with furlough. And this pattern of furlough effects being stronger in small firms than large firms. Is evident across all of the investment intention variables. And if we look at the effect on. Of the furlough treatment on well-being. What we see here is a slightly larger effect in larger firms. The first pane on the left-hand side, this is the mental health effect. The line slopes down slightly, so it's the decline in the likelihood of. Experiencing mental health issues increases as you get through firm size. So here we've got the reverse effect, that furlough seems to be having a larger effect on the probability that firms will. Experience mental health effects among their employees, among larger firms rather than smaller firms. And as I said before, the effects on sickness absence and repeat sickness absence are insignificant here. The 95% confidence intervals cover the zero line. So some sort of early conclusions. We find that both furlough and the loan schemes, C-bills and BBLs. Are associated positively with future investment intentions. This effect is largely consistent across a range of investment priorities, so it includes innovation, it includes exporting, it includes capital equipment. So across a number of areas, firms receiving these schemes seem more likely to invest in the future. And I guess this could be associated with a strong liquidity effect of these support measures. For furlough, what we see is that this treatment effect from loans. On investment is significantly greater among smaller firms. And that's exactly, I guess, what we would have anticipated from other policy analysis. Which suggests that very often additionality is greater among smaller firms. In terms of well-being, we also find that furlough and furlough and the combination of loan schemes are associated with reduction in. Mental health, the likelihood of experiencing mental health issues, but no relation to sickness. And again, but these well-being effects are slightly stronger in larger firms. So I guess the logic model suggests that both of these kind of policy, but through both of these mechanisms. They may work through reduction in mental health issues due to furlough. And furlough having positive innovation effect on investment intentions. That may have positive future productivity effects. Although it looks as if these two effects are working rather differently in smaller and larger firms. And I'll stop there.
Great, thank you Stephen. Once again, we have some space for questions, and I will urge people to ask some. But let me kick off. Have you split any of this out by sector or just very broad, you know? Hospitality versus the rest, I mean.
Not really, we have sector controls in the analysis, of course, so we're picking up those sort of shift effects. But I think it's absolutely right that we might want to do that and have a look at some of those kinds of. Sector aggregates, because I suspect there will be sector sensitivities there. I suppose part of my surprise was with the SME finance monitor data though. Was looking across the sectors to see the relatively similar use of furlough. And the loan schemes, at least across divisions. Now, I guess if you get within divisions, you might see finer-grain SICs, you might see a different picture. But in that sense, at least, we were seeing a rather uniform picture across the economy.
Yeah. Klaus de Vries, can you mute and, can you unmute and ask your question, please?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yep, that's good.
Great, great. So this is Klaus de Vries, I just comment, I was also a co-author on the paper with Bart, with the conference board. Based in Brussels. I just, yeah, so first of all, thanks Stephen for this very interesting presentation and. Yeah, very innovative way to look at this with the logic model. Because the data is still lacking at this point. I was just wondering if you could comment on something that, for example, The Economist, the weekly magazine, is pretty focal on that. Or at least in previous months, they've been pretty focal on that. They are very critical on their support schemes that are being done in Europe, these furlough schemes. And they argue that it has a very negative effect on long-term growth and productivity because it sort of. Freezes the economy and they argue, look, there's many different changes going on. So it's much better done in the US, for example, where the labour market policies are very different. Where they don't support businesses as such, I mean, there were some wage policy. Policy measures, I think, but mostly, I mean, yeah, we saw the unemployment measures also were very different from those in Europe. And they basically argue that the US actually has a better system because they are now better suited to, you know, for people to move into new growth sectors. You know, a lot of things have changed post-pandemic, so. So I was just wondering, yeah, I hope you see where I'm getting at, I'm just wondering how you, because your result seems to. Go a bit against this, so I was just wondering if you could comment on that or what do you think about that?
Yeah, I'm not sure our results are necessarily inconsistent with that view. But, I mean, it does, I mean, A, we're focusing on SMEs, which may be at the more vulnerable end. But I think we do have in our logic models the potential for sort of negative effects by keeping sort of zombie firms alive. And I think that's a real effect, and we will see potentially that as we go forward. I suspect that in a European context. An American type of policy, sorry, in a European context with European employment, labour market legislation. An American-type policy may not have been as easy to apply. And the furlough scheme was an easy policy option, I think, in many ways, and also a very expensive one. But I think the jury will still be out on the importance of these firm-level. Infirm and within firm adjustments for some time to come potentially. But I think we are dealing with very strongly here with that within firm aspect of it. And I wouldn't minimize the potential value or importance of that allocation mechanism in the future.
Great, thanks.
Good. Jeffrey Pugh had one on management and leadership effects, go ahead and ask.
Oh, thank you.
You're quite faint.
I'm sorry, is that any better?
Yep.
Yeah, just, we've just met here, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, it seems that in most sectors in the UK economy. We have a group of, you know, a large number of firms that operate at world's best standard. They're quite comparable, say, to German Mittelstand firms. But we have a very, very long tail of firms that underperform on any measure. Many so-called zombie firms. Now, what I'm wondering is, and I've only picked this up by talking to people, you know, friends involved in different businesses. That, yeah, there does seem to be a lot of rethinking going on. That the more far-sighted managers and leaders, business leaders have stood back and think, right. We've got the opportunity now, you know, we're just ticking over, let's think, you know, let's really rethink the business model. Now, if that's the case on the one hand, but on the other hand, if you've got less aware. Far-sighted leaders just standing back and essentially taking the money, I mean, could we, so my question is, I mean, could we see. An even starker, an even more pronounced differentiation between, so to speak, you know. A group of top performers and the rest of rather poorly underperforming firms.
I think that's, that is potentially very likely. It's absolutely the case that some firms have seen the last year. And the crisis as an opportunity to sort of re-engineer the business, and that will be very positive for some firms. I guess we can, to a certain extent, look at that in our data by looking at. How these investment intentions and well-being measures. Are reflected at different sort of points in the productivity distribution of different firms. And that might be a very interesting thing actually to look at. It's to say, are these effects actually more pronounced, these positive treatment effects more pronounced among firms which are already more productive? And that may kind of address your point to a certain extent. What worries me slightly is that I suspect that the firms that we have in the UK. Particularly in the SME space, which are at the more lively end. And those that are at the less lively end are probably concentrated spatially. And I think that that is probably going to be the biggest issue where in some areas we stand to lose. Quite a lot of business dynamism, and in other areas we may gain that, which may exacerbate some of the. Already large regional and urban, you know, regional and spatial differences in productivity in the UK.
Thank you.
I should be glad if we see some bit of shakeout going on here. But anyway, we've only got a few minutes left, and Bart has had his hand up for some time, Bart. And then we'll.
Thanks.
So just a couple of minutes, please.
Sure, Stephen, I want to sharpen up one part of Klaus de Vries's question a little bit, and that's really, you made a distinction in the short-term impact on the investment and the longer-term impact. Because I think these furlough programs and the business support programs could make quite a bit of difference there. So I wonder if you were able to pick up the short-term and long-term impacts, and then somewhat related to that. Also, the impacts that these programs ultimately have on labour and the demand for labour, because you could ultimately see that if. Firms still envisage a shortage of labour or particular skills. In going forwards, that would be indirectly a drive to automate, for example, and invest more additional technology. So I wonder if you were able to sort of pick up some of these effects.
We are very limited here, Bart, in terms of the range of kind of particular measures which happen to be found in these surveys. And the investment intention we have is simply a one-year forward variable at this point. It is interesting, we've been doing some other work with Innovate UK, where we've been looking at the impact of. The COVID crisis and liquidity issues on firms that have Innovate UK grants. And there we do find quite distinct differences in the very short-term approach to and willingness to invest in innovation and R&amp;D. And that over the next year, with a much more optimistic view of firms being willing to. Seeing themselves investing over the next year rather than in the next quarter. And so I think absolutely that issue about time horizons going forward is going to be something that we'll want to look at as we move forward.
Good, thank you. Well, I think all three papers, it's sort of medium and long-term effects that. Really going to be interesting, obviously really going to be important, and where the real work remains to be done, obviously. But it's going to be a big area going forward, so thank you all. And I'll wrap up the session at this point. Thanks to the questioners and of course the panelists, thanks.